And we'll have Commissioner Flag do the flag, so.[3.12][3.12][laughter] We have just a few, there we go, nine o'clock, alright. Let's go with.
Spouter heads. Most gracious heavenly father, we thank you for this day. We thank you that we live in America and we have the freedoms that we do. We thank you that we live in Putnam County. And we thank you that we can meet today in peace and freedom. Dear lord, please bless the people in this room that have benefited from Drug Court and are graduating. Please be with them and give the strength to persevere. Thank you that we have such a program. Thank you, lord, for our meeting today. Please grant us wisdom as we make our decisions. Help us listen to what people have to say and understand and make the right decision. We thank you for everything. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
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 Let's salute our great nation together. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Commissioner Harris and Commissioner Flag. Appreciate it. Okay, commissioners, in front of you have the May tenth, two thousand and sixteen minutes. I will entertain a motion if you review them and.
Mister Chairman, I move approval of the minutes.
Motion on the floor.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes approved. Okay, if I could get Judge Libby Morris and her group at the podium. We're gonna have Commissioner Harvey read into the record a proclamation honoring Drug Court Month. Remarks from Judge Morris.
Mister Chairman, fellow board members, Putnam County Proclamation Number two thousand sixteen dash thirty-seven, Drug Court Month. Whereas Drug Courts and other treatment courts have served over one point four million individuals, and whereas they are now recognized as the most successful criminal justice intervention in our nation's history, and whereas they save up to twenty-seven dollars for every one dollar invested, and up to thirteen thousand dollars for every individual they serve, and whereas seventy-five percent of Treatment Court graduates will never see another pair of handcuffs, whereas Treatment Courts significantly improve substance abuse treatment outcomes, substantially reducing substance abuse and crime, and do so at less expense than any other criminal justice strategy, and whereas Treatment Courts facilitate community-wide partnerships, bringing together public safety and public health professionals in the fight against substance abuse and criminality, and whereas there are now two thousand nine hundred and sixty-six Drug Courts and other treatment courts nationwide, and whereas Drug Courts and other Treatment Courts are the cornerstone of criminal justice reforms sweeping the nation, and whereas Treatment Courts demonstrate that when one person rises out of a substance use and crime, we all rise, and whereas the time has come to put the Treatment Court within reach of every eligible person in need, whereas the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners recognize the successful work of the practitioners and participants of Drug Court programs to reduce the impact of drug abuse in our community, now therefore be proclaimed by the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners in meetings assembled on twenty-fourth day of May, two thousand sixteen. The month of May, two thousand sixteen is hereby declared Drug Court Month in Putnam County, and all citizens are urged to recognize the significant contributions of Drug Courts and graduates, this year's Drug Court graduates. Mister Chairman, I move approval of Proclamation two thousand sixteen thirty-seven.
Motion on the floor.
Second.
Commissioner Palacir, further discussion, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes, congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, good morning. It's great to be here with you all today. This is Drug Court's annual trek over to the county commission, and I was just telling Jackie before I came up here that I was looking back, I've, this is my sixth year in Drug Court, so this is my sixth visit to y'all, to talk to y'all about Drug Court. The night, the greatest thing about Drug Court is I don't really have to sell you on it, you're already sold on it, and our nation is sold on it because it is a program that is working. As I've told you all before, the estimates are that somewhere around thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars are spent to incarcerate an inmate for one year in the Department of Corrections. That's to house him, feed him, clothe him, take care of their medical needs, and anything else that goes on with them. We spend somewhere between seven, eight, nine thousand dollars on a participant in Drug Court, and that's all doing outpatient treatment, drug testing, you know, coming to court, going to meetings, doing other things. But the important thing about it is that we are, you know, maximizing our dollars because the folks that are coming out of Drug Court are drug-free, they're employed, they're taking care of their families, and they're not committing additional crime, which I can't tell you how much money that saves this county, but you know, it goes without saying that it's a bundle. I'd like to take this opportunity to tell you that since the inception of our Drug Court and Judge Art Nichols was instrumental in getting this program started, we have had a hundred and sixty-six successful graduates. Tomorrow, we're going to have another graduate, so as of tomorrow, we'll have a hundred and sixty-seven successful graduates of this program. So I think that the money that the county commission allot for this is well spent. I want to take this opportunity to introduce to you the Drug Court team because this really is a team effort, not one person could do this. I'm the Drug Court judge and I lead the team, but it does take everyone working in conjunction to make this thing work. So the first person sitting right here on the front row is Ms. Jackie Yink, she's our program coordinator. Stand up Jackie. We've got Dr. Vicky Buckle, she's with SMA. Patrick Smiley, is that right? He's with SMA. Jeff Kramer with SMA. The probation officer everyone loves, Officer David Brzezinski. Who else is here? So that's part of the team. And then, you know, this room is full of people who are attending Drug Court or recent Drug Court graduates or have graduated from this program in the past. So I'm just gonna ask them to stand up so that you can see who's here and who the county is serving. If you're participating in Drug Court, you're here for Drug Court today, or supporting the Drug Court, family members, stand up. And Nicole, I want you to stand back up so that they can see who's, this is our graduate for tomorrow, Ms. Nicole McCombs.
Congratulations Nicole.
And, you know, we always kinda come here and just take over for a few minutes and let some story, let y'all hear some stories and some information about Drug Court, and so I'm gonna make my remarks short. One thing I would like to ask, I do not believe, I think that this started in two thousand two Jackie? And, yeah, and I don't think since two thousand two that Drug Court has asked for any additional funding from the county commission, but I would like to.[558.29][558.29][laughter] I'm gonna break that tradition today.
I thought that might be coming.
Yeah, just ask y'all to consider when you're doing your budgeting, we could use another twenty or twenty-five thousand dollars added to our budget, we could do some additional drug testing, we could implement some additional programs, and you know, we could utilize some new things that have come up for treatment for Drug Court participants if we had a little more funding. So, anything that y'all would be willing to offer us, we would be very happy to receive. Alright? And I'm gonna turn it over to Jackie, she's got a few comments she'd like to make, and then we're gonna let some folks out in the audience who want to tell you about their experience in Drug Court come forward. But again, thank you very much for having us today.
Thank you Judge Morris. Morning Jackie.
Good morning. Anyway, short of the person. Thank you again for letting us, you know, come before you to, you know, share some of our great participants, and I will say this, Judge Morris has been here for, is it six years? And thinking about it, actually I was thinking about it the last few days, and I was very fortunate to be one of the ones that was here from day one. And this job has been a blessing, it's the most rewarding job. I don't really consider it a job, I just considered it a bigger family. And I have to say this about the clients that we have right now, and we've had, you know, past groups that have been great, but this is probably, in my opinion, the most receptive group that we have ever had, that everyone is in their mind thinking treatment and not a way of staying out of trouble or going to jail and so forth. They are very, very committed, and I can't say enough about that because it just is so rewarding to see, you know, families come together, self-esteem, just everything, just wonderful, wonderful changes. And I would like to say this because sometimes they're not recognized as much as they should be, okay? And I'm gonna say the probation officer, Brzezinski, he's awesome, and he treats people with dignity as all should, and the clients love him, he's very fair, he doesn't play games, and we love having him as part of our team. And then the other part is with treatment, sometimes people don't realize what they actually go through. You have to understand when you have thirty to forty clients, each person is an individual, and being an individual, trying to figure out, you know, underlying problems and getting that trust, and being able to, you know, customize basically, individuals, it takes a lot. I mean, to me, it's basically an art as well as the education behind it. And so, for that, I wanna say thank you to Stuart Marchman, very, very much, because I know the clients have really benefited, and so I just wanted to say that, okay. Next, what I'd like to do, and this is my favorite part, is start asking people to come forward because when things come from the heart, you know it, and that always moves me, and that's why like with the graduations and y'all are all invited, the public is invited, however many can fit in the courtroom tomorrow, it's scheduled for three-thirty, just depending on how court runs, but we have one graduate and we just want to show all of our support for her because she's worked very, very hard, and we're all proud of her. So what I'd like to first ask is, Mister Deputy, could you come forward please? He's gonna say nice stuff.
Good morning.
Good morning Sam.
I am so well-trained by Mayor Flag that I have to say Sam Deputy nine seventeen Carr Street, Polacka, because that's what we had to say for Carl Flag as mayor. So, good morning. I'm here representing the Florida Azalea Festival, and we have a great relationship with the county. Tim Smith and his office so generously throws open the county courthouse yard, make sure it's ready for us, and we try to center our festival around the county courthouse because it is one of our treasured landmarks, and we love that. And as you know, we were supposed to be ending up our ten years of Florida Azalea Festival, but we've just been asked to do it for six more years and have agreed, so you have us back. But, thank you. But as you know, with any festival, there's a lot of work, and there is not one volunteer organization anywhere that is fully staffed with volunteers, and as such, we are constantly short. Two years ago, Jackie asked if, or, I'm not quite sure how that happened, but anyway, she supplied some volunteers and it worked wonderful. Last year, she supplied a great number of volunteers, and it was almost one hundred percent perfect, if not perfect. They came in, they worked, I never had to look for anybody, I never had to find anybody. For the first year, we had no barricade problems in downtown Polacka, and that's the first year that has ever happened, because in Polacka, if there's a barricade, your goal is to knock it down, run over it, drive around it. If there was a hole, and that has happened in the construction downtown, you're gonna drive around it and fall in the hole, because obviously that's what driver Ed has taught us here. But this year, for the first year, no people were confused, as in past years, to drive down sidewalks on St. John's Avenue, because that happens about once a year. It was just wonderful to have our streets manned by these young men and women. The streets were clean, Ed Chandler with the city of Polacka said for the second year, they let their crews go home early because the streets were ready, the courthouse was ready, trash was picked up. I can't say enough, and so, one of the things that we thought about in accepting the festival for six more years was, would these volunteers be available, and we're hoping so. And we just want to say, on their behalf and our behalf, thank you for what you are doing to support this activity here in Putnam County, and I'm gonna give your secretary a letter of thank you to put into the minutes.
Sam, also, I'd like to take a moment to thank not just the men and women of Drug Court helping you in your effort, but your effort alone. I'm not sure we would have an Azalea Festival if it wasn't for Sam Deputy, folks.
I think that, thank you. It is a great event for our city, for our county, and it showcases some of the best that we have, so we're very proud to work within that organization.
We're proud to have you as a resident leading that charge, thank you.
Thank you Sam. Going back to the community service, we take a lot of pride in that, our clients take a lot of pride in that, and actually, people are banging our doors down to get help, and sometimes it gets a little bit difficult to do that, but I will let you know that the clients actually were doing the Polacka Pride, and that's once a month, and most everyone has all of their required community service hours done, but they all come forward and they help out. And they do this with other events as well, because a hundred and forty hours are required, but many, many persons like Mr. Jones probably have about three hundred hours, and some of the people that have actually graduated still do their community service almost every day. So it, you know, they take a lot of pride in that. So now, what I'd like to do is, Mister Gilbert, I know you have to get to work, so he wanted to say a few words.
Good morning everyone.
Good morning.
My name's Steve Gilbert, I'm a local business owner on Vernon's Auto Repair out on Highway nineteen. I have had one son graduate from this program, and I have another son that is in the process of trying to get into the program. It's been a difficult situation for that one because he was, had a situation in another county, but the team has done an outstanding job in trying to bring all that paperwork and everything together so that they could get my son in this program, because the result of what I seen from the first time was, I seen a child of mine who was dying from the addiction of drugs, he was dying in front of me, and I was watching it day by day. But this program pulled my son out of death and helped him to start turning around his life, and I've seen that happen in the lives of several of the kids that are sitting in here today, not just the ones here today, but others that have graduated, because I've kinda stuck around this program and have tried to donate some of my time back to help these kids out. And as Ms. Jackie said, the kids that are in the program today are probably some of the most, well, without question, the most receptive ones that I've seen in the five years I've been around this program. And so I think what we're seeing is, we're seeing a drawl of people who wanna get help coming into this program that we haven't had in the past, and that's why we're seeing more success with the participants that are in the program. So when the judge just asks you to maybe up the budget, what you need to consider is not the twenty-five thousand that she asked for, but another thirty-five thousand to help expand this program. Because for people like me, members of the community, that are, you know, you're giving us back our families and our lives, you know, our children are our children again. So I mean, it wouldn't be out of question to kick in an extra ten thousand just to show your, you know, show your support, because I, for one member of this community, I love this program, I brag on this program, and anytime someone ever says to me, well, you know, they're not getting results, my first answer is, you don't know what you're talking about. Because any day, an alcoholic or an addict does not use as a miracle.
That's right.
In any day that a family gets to look back into the eyes of their true child, their husband, their father, their son, their daughter, and see the person that they once knew that was hooked on drugs, but is now free from the obsession of the drugs that they've dealt with. I mean, there's no better reward. So with that, you know, I'm gonna close my statement, and I thank you all for considering what she's asked, and I hope that when you actually get down and crunch those numbers, that you're able to find that money, because this program is important to this county, and it's important to the people of this county. So I thank you. Y'all have a good morning.
Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you.
I also wanted to mention that Captain Joe Wells is here, and he's been a part of the team, we just missed you at the first part, so anyways, he's been very supportive throughout his working with Drug Court.
Nine years ago I got involved.
You're nine years, see, time just flies. I know, this is gonna be my fifteenth, this is crazy, it flies. So again, what I'd like to do is to actually ask participants, families, Yashica, come on up.
She's anxious.
That's good, I had no idea, but it's great. She just had a drug-free baby as well.
Good morning, my name is Yashica Dukes. I just wanna say thank you to Drug Court team for, y'all for supporting us. I just had a baby, she's drug-free, and in this program, you have to be honest with yourself and with the Drug Court people. If you're not honest with yourself, you're not gonna make it. If you're not, don't dig down deep and find those problems that you're dealing with and talk about them, you're not gonna make it. And I just wanna say thank you, and that's all I have to say.
It's great to have drug-free babies. Okay, so, please come forward, I don't know your first name.
Okay.
I figured it was your mom, but I.
If you would, keep the microphone in front of you because we were taping the meeting and it's real important to pick it up, yeah, and your name and address.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Angela Ritchie. I live at one nine seven Wilkinson Road, Polacka, Florida. I'm not a public figure, and I don't know about the direct finances of this situation. Twenty-six years ago, I had a son who was healthy and strong, and I watched him grow in this community. He played football, he excelled, he graduated high school here at this stadium. He became this incredible human being who worked every day and was honest and kind and respected himself and respected others. And then he caught up in the epidemic that is killing our youth today, and everything changed, and I knew, no longer knew my son. And in the morning, I would wake up and I would hear him be sick before he went to work. And in the evenings, he would come home, and it was difficult for him to hold his head and to look me in the eyes. This morning, my son sat down next to me and we laughed. We laughed, and I have my son back. What you are doing is not just supporting a program financially, you are saving our youth. This program is saving our youth. You need to understand that it is not just the participants, it's the employers, it's what this county will be, they are our future. They lose self-esteem, they lose self-respect when you're sick and you're ill, and this is not just our problem, it is a national problem and national epidemic. I have my child back, and I will never be able to thank you enough for giving me my child back. And this morning, when the gentleman stood up and said, "Good morning," it is a good morning, it's a good morning, because I looked at my son as he sat next to me and we laughed for the first time in so long. I missed my son, I missed who he was and what he had to offer this community and this society and his family, and I just needed to tell you that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I definitely know you now and will never forget. Wow. So, again, I'd like to see if there's other participants, family, Rebecca, come on up. This is our little piece of dynamite, she is Miss Community Service, and she can outwork anyone that I know.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Maven. I've been a drug dealer and an addict for over thirty-eight years. I started Drug Court January twenty-seventh, and I am proud to say I have a hundred and forty-eight cleaned days. And I couldn't have done it without all of this. I don't even remember the last time not being high, so this is a whole new life for me. I've got a job, I love community service, I love everybody, Ms. Judge Morris, Brzezinski, my, me and Jeff over there, Dr. Buckles, she's that, Ms. Jackie, they don't judge me for the person that I used to be, they're here to help me to become the person that I'm supposed to be, and every day, I take one step more forward toward, and I thank y'all so much for all that, because I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for Drug Court.
Thank you for your testimony this morning.
Tell you, we have a great group, we really do. Would there, okay, Harold?
I'm Harold Moore, I live at one thirty East Street, Polacka, Florida. I was a little bit different than some of the individuals, I'm forty years old, and so it was a little bit later in life when I found the addiction of drugs and alcohol. I've coached some of your grandchildren in football, I've sold some of your cars, I've done financing for you before. And so this was a, kind of a nervous thing for me, thinking about it, having to face people in the community that I've done a lot with, but through this program, I've got that courage and am able to do that. And I have been in a treatment program before, and I can say without a doubt, in also businesses I've owned and worked for, this is the best team of people I've ever worked with in my life. They care really truly about you, it's not just a job, they can say that and they know that they mean it. And that is huge when it comes to someone like myself, and I feel confident speaking for the other Drug Court members, that, of how much that means, you know, that you're not just a person, you're not a number, they care about you. That does help with the self-esteem and the confidence to know that you're cared about. And I just wanna thank each and every one of y'all for affording us the opportunity to participate in such a wonderful program. And one of the hugest things I'd like to add is, stopping drugs is like this much. It's changing the behaviors and the deep-down stuff that causes this, it's this much. And that's what this program and the team from SMA and all does. They educate you, teach you, get down to the root of what caused all of this. And that's, in my opinion, and what I've been taught, is going to change us and to make us successful. You've gotta change the cause, can't just treat the symptoms, you gotta treat what caused it. Like I said, I thank each and every one of you for affording us the opportunity to participate. Thank you.
Thank you.
I did see another hand. Our graduate-to-be tomorrow?
Got one in the.
Got one in the back.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Nicole McCombs. Actually, I just wanted to come up here and say thank you. I've been on this program for two years, and unfortunately, that first year, I didn't want to get it. I didn't want to get it at all.
Take your time, Nicole.
But I did. I have four hundred and twenty sober days today. I have a full-time job. Just what Drug Court has done for myself, for my family, I can't thank you enough. It's just a blessing in itself. I mean, it really is. Drug Court is just amazing. If you want it, and I was just, I was telling them the other day, you know, like Ms. Jackie had just said, "No, I'm not a counselor or anything," but I have been in this program for two years. So I have seen some come and go, and this is by far one of the best groups in Drug Court that we have had. And just again, thank you. I mean, because it has changed my whole life.
Nicole, you look happy, and you look healthy.
I am so very happy.
I can see that.
Great.
We're happy for you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Right.
Again, graduation is tomorrow, and she is our star. And I see Zach, you were wanting to come forward. Please come forward.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Zach Free, 2908 Brownsland Road, Placca, Florida.
Thank you.
Which that is my own place.
You will.
I just wanted to let y'all know some of the achievements I've actually accomplished in this program and where I was at at first. I started using drugs at ten years old, incarcerated, did forty months out of my life inside of Putnam County Jail alone. But since then, since I've been accepted into the program, I have got two certifications, one in NCCER and one in OSHA. I also got my high school diploma. And I have my children, and that's one of the biggest accomplishments I've made. And I have my own place. And I'm two hundred and four days clean.
Awesome.
And I'm a little nervous, and...
Can't tell.
That's about it, just short and sweet. And I want to thank the program. I want to thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would there be anyone else that would like to say anything, make a statement? Come on. And he's made a remarkable turnaround, haven't you?
Hi, my name's Larry Sopscow. A lot of you people know me and have been voting with me. And Mr. Flag, how are you? I thought I was a functioning addict for many years. I ran a company here in town, as you guys know, and a lot of you guys have bought cars and supported the business that we had, similar to Harold. I had done it for a long time. And thank gosh, I got caught, because I don't know if I would be here today. What I wanted to say is, the people of the program care about you. It's not a job to them. When they ask you a question, they mean it. They want to see you succeed. It's not just push you in and push you out. So, the biggest thing I wanted to do is thank you guys for the funding. And again, if there's more for it to expand it, it would be a great opportunity for the county.
Larry, you look great, and I'm proud of you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, you do.
You look good, teacher.
Thank you.
Okay. Don't want to take up all of your time, but is there anyone else that would like to say something, something from the heart? Melanie, would you like to? You just have that look. You don't have to, but...
I'll cry, it's okay.
Okay. Mr. Jones, please. Oh. Okay, y'all, come on up.
Good morning. I'm Christine Riggins. I live at 3421 St. John's Avenue, apartment 605 here in Placca. This is my son, John Jones, who's been in the program for about twenty, twenty months. And he's made a big turnaround in his life. I'm actually the one that turned him in to the police, because he, being on drugs, he had taken some of my jewelry. But it wasn't the jewelry that made me turn him in. It was fear of finding him dead when I went to check on him in his bedroom. So, I did that, and he's done good. He didn't like it to start with, but I don't think he ever held it against me, you know? And I don't hold it against him, you know, in that. But I'm so proud of him. He has, he's started his own business, and he's, he seems to be very happy. And I'm happy that he's happy.
Amen.
And as far as I know, he does not hold any grudges against me for going to the detectives about him.
He better not.
But thank y'all. I appreciate the program, and he's doing, he's doing wonderfully. And I appreciate y'all's help to have the program.
We're happy for your team. Reborn.
Hello, I'm John Jones. That's my mom, and, you know, I want to thank her first and foremost, because she probably did save my life, you know? And then I want to thank the Drug Court team and you guys, you know, because without you guys, it wouldn't happen, you know? You know, I've had a drug addiction probably twenty-five years, you know? I like to consider myself a functioning addict, you know, which I did for years, you know? I maintained and did what I was supposed to do, but slowly over the years, it was killing me, you know? Yeah, I'm trying not to get emotional. I'm a big baby sometimes, but anyway. Yeah, the counseling, you know, my counselor, Suzette, I don't know if she's here or not, but she's done an excellent job with me, you know, because I had some underlying issues that I had to deal with, you know? And if it hadn't been for the Drug Court, you know, the whole team of Drug Court, the counseling and all that they provide, you know, I did go to long-term, because in the beginning, I just, I wasn't having it. But, you know, I got it quickly, you know? I went to jail a few times, and, you know, and I finally started getting it, you know? They tried, they tell you, you know, to just embrace the program. And then, you know, like I said, I went to rehab for seven months, and, you know, that was probably the turning point for me, you know? So that's something else that Drug Court offers, you know, that, you know, some people need that, you know? They need a little more than others, you know? And I was one of them. And, you know, that, I don't know. I can't really say enough, you know? I mean, to everybody, I just want to thank all of you guys for your support. And, you know, they need money.
Thank you. Thank you, John, and congratulations.
Before I leave to go down to the courthouse, because I've got some other duties, I just want to say, I'd give y'all a sales pitch, but I really don't think I need to.
No, you didn't.
Thank you very much for your continued support of Drug Court. We appreciate it very much. And, you know, it's really nice that we can have, you know, such a collaborative effort on something that has such a big impact on our entire community and all of our lives. So again, thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, Judge Morris.
Mr. Chairman?
She's awesome. She is. So, again, just, I think I'll do this one last time. If there's anyone, because I don't want to leave anyone out, if they have something that they just feel like they need to put out there. So, is there anyone else? Is that it? Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could I make a couple comments, please?
Absolutely.
I think it's interesting that you can see this group is here, and if you work around the courthouse, you get to see them a lot, and how rewarding it is to see a successful program, because a lot of people that come in that building struggle with issues and a lot of components of their life. But in this case, you see people that are pulling together, working together for great success. And the state, unfortunately, doesn't allow state dollars to fund a extra court in your court system. So then, all of these dollars that come about to make this happen have to be acquired in other places. And the County Commission has, for the time that the Drug Court's been in place, has funded a component of that. And so I would encourage you to look at that, because it is a success. And for all those comments that were made and the families that are put back together, it, I mean, you just can't really put a dollar amount to it. But the reality is, is it still costs money to run these things. And so I'm sorry that Judge Morris has left, but it takes a judge also that's willing to donate her time, because she doesn't actually get recognition and credit in judge speak for that, except that she wants to do it as a community, and so did Judge Nichols. And so when you see the people that interact with Judge Morris and Joe Wells and the probation officers, it becomes more of a family. And so as the certified best hugger in Putnam County, I saw Judge Morris hug every one of those people that left here. And in most times, a judge and people that are in a courtroom are really at opposite sides of the room. And so when you see folks that'll take that and break down those walls and move this forward, then you really see a great program. So, you know, from the sheriff's office to the probation folks, to Stuart Marchman, to Jackie and to Judge Morris, it really is a great program. So I would also like to encourage looking at that budget, and if there's any way possible to assist so that we have more folks come here, I think it would be the right thing to do. And I thank you for letting me make a few comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm actually going to call someone out, because actually, I miss him, and that's...
Jackie, before you do that, Commissioner Flag has a comment.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do want to say, first of all, that this issue that we deal with as it relates to the indiscriminate effects of addiction, it's not a personal problem. It's a community issue. And I want to thank our community for embracing all who have in any way, shape, form, or fashion, directly or indirectly, felt the effects of this. And I want to say to the practitioners, the team, I want to let you know how much we appreciate the fact that, number one, you're on point; number two, you're priceless; and thirdly, you represent our community's pride. And thank you for your compassion and respect. Thirdly, last but not least, to the participants. We believe in you. Don't you look back or down another day. You look up, look forward, know that you are loved. We're not holding you hostage for anything that's in your past. Let's join forces together and make Putnam County the place that we want it to be. You are very much a part of our progress and our progressive future. So I want to say again, Jackie, it is important for everybody in this room, regardless of what side of the tracks we come from, we are family.
That's right.
Together, we will make it there. So don't look at us as being the public figures and all of those who are making things happen. It's this entire community that's making this happen. We're just the caregivers as it relates to leading this county forward. But each citizen who believe in our leadership are the ones that deserve the credit here. So whatever we need to do to make a preemptive strike, this program is so good, we've got to get folk before they can get in the program and have a program before the program. And so that we can have these testimonies of what it could have been before it happened. So thank you all for letting us play the minor role that we play.
That's right. Great. Thank you, Commissioner Flag. Continue on. Thank you, Jack.
Carl, thank you so much. You've always been this to me, is a person, a wonderful man, that brings me closer to God. And so for that, I say thank you. Okay, thank you. Joe Wells, Captain? You've got to come forward.
There's nothing I can say that would top what's already been said in here today. And, you know, so, but just thinking about it off the top of my head, from the position of a Christian, it seems like the right thing to do. From the position of a taxpayer, it seems like the right thing for the county to do. And from the position of the law enforcement administrator in the county, it's the right thing to do. Because to continuously incarcerate non-violent drug offenders without treating the root of the problem, being the addiction, is like a quote I once heard, and I like here, it's like straightening the deck chairs on the Titanic. And what we'll can do is continue to reincarcerate, reincarcerate, while these people are not productive citizens, not paying taxes, not raising their children, when what we need to do is treat the root of the problem and the cause of the issue. And that is just what they're talking about here today. So Drug Court meets that need in our county, and I appreciate the commissioners and everyone involved in it. And it's been my pleasure to work with these young people for about the last eight or nine years. Unfortunately, due to some position changes, I'm not quite as involved as I used to be, but I can tell you that the sheriff's office is dedicated to this program, and we will always be, because it's just the right thing to do.
That's right. Good job. Commissioner Harris?
Thank you. I appreciate a chance to say something. In 2002 is when we started the program, and I was on the commission. I remember that Brad Purcell flew out to California with Judge Nichols, and they looked at the program to see what it was about and see if we wanted to do it. And I was thinking of all the commissioners before, and I'm going to get a tape of this and send it to Brad. But all these years, we've continued to support it, because it really does work. And I'm getting ready to retire in November. And I think of all the things that we've done over the years, I think this is one of the very best. And I'm proud that we were able to do it, and that the commissioners after that have always supported it. And you make us feel really good, and thank you for sharing with us today so that we really understand.
Thank you very, very much, because, yes, I do remember from day one, the first time coming in front of you, and those words, those similar words, you knew it from the very beginning and have continued to support it throughout. So, again, thank you from the bottom of all of our hearts, okay? Thank you. I think you've heard a lot of great stories, and they're not really stories, are they? They're families. And this is an awesome program. And the continued support, I know it will always be there, because Drug Court makes a difference. It does. So I just want to say thank you, and our team thanks you, and all the participants, past graduates, we all thank you, because this is not a job. It really isn't. It's just something that comes from your heart. And so thank you, and I think that's all we have to say.
I have one thing to add, and this is to the court participants, if I could. I know what Ms. Jackie means to y'all, and how stern and how loving she can be also. But let's give her a round of applause. Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you. We do need to shoes up here next year. I will bring them. Okay? But anyways, thank you so kindly, and we'll leave you to the rest of your business day, and we'll go get busy, okay?
All right. Folks, we're going to recess for about five minutes, because we have a lot of folks leaving and coming, and we'll reconvene in five minutes.
Chairman, if you would, if we could get the proclamation in while we have an audience, would you please consider that? I think they would appreciate having an audience while they present this next proclamation.
Sure, sure, we can do that.
Will you consider that, just before the recess?
All right, we have reading. Well, Ms. Fisk from the Coast Guard Auxiliary is with us today, and we can certainly do that, and then we'll clear the room.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
How are you, Kathleen? I'll go. And who's reading? This is Commissioner Palser.
Commissioner Palser. Thanks, sir.
I appreciate that, guys, because this really means a lot to everybody around in the county and the city of Interlochen where we live.
Little shake, left-handed.
Yes, sir. Doing great.
Commissioner Palser?
Yes. Putnam County Proclamation Number 2016-38, National Safe Boating Week. Whereas for ninety million Americans, boating continues to be a popular recreational activity that may be enjoyed year-round, and whereas from coast to coast and everywhere in between, people are... people are taking to the water and enjoying time together boating, sailing, paddling, fishing, and whereas during National Safe Boating Week, the board wishes to bring special attention to the pastime and remind recreational boaters to ensure that they and their loved ones are safe and responsible while exploring our nation's waterways. And whereas proper planning for a day of boating begins even before leaving home by getting a free vessel safety check, taking a safety, safe boat, boating course, filing a float plan with a trusted family member or friend, and checking the weather before boating. And whereas every boater should wear a U.S. Coast Guard-approved life jacket at all times while boating, as drowning remains the number-one cause of death for recreational boaters each year, and the majority of drowning victims in recreational boating accidents are not wearing a life jacket. Whereas safe, responsible boating includes never operating a boat while under the influence of drugs or alcohol and knowing the basic navigational rules. Whereas an average of 650 people die each year in boating-related accidents in the U.S., approximately three-fourths of these fatalities caused by drowning. And whereas the vast majority of these accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment, not by the boat, equipment, or environmental factors. And whereas a significant number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today had they worn their life jackets. And now therefore be it proclaimed by the Putnam County Board of Commissioners in a meeting assembled this 24th day of May, 2016, that the week of May 21st through May 27th, 27th, 2016, is declared Safe Boating Week in Putnam County. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners urges all those who boat to wear it and practice safe boating habits. Mr. Chairman, I so move approval of this proclamation.
Second.
Motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It carries. Kathleen? Thank you very much.
While you're doing the photo op, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just wanna thank Kathleen for her participation with the Waterways Committee in this same position and serving for so many years, and we appreciate that very much.
Well, hello, everybody. As you said, my name is Kathy Fisk. I will give you my address. 119 Yeez Avenue, Interlochen, Florida. And yes, I'm a very proud of Interlochen resident. National Safe Boating Week is something that is very near and dear to my heart. I teach the children's education programs, is what we've started here in Putnam County. And what the main goal is, everybody can be a safe boater, but the children, they don't have a choice. You know, you have to be the one that can take care of them. If you start these kids young knowing what to look at for a life jacket, how to put a life jacket on, how to be safe on the water, as they continue to grow, they're going to help their friends and hopefully, my goal is down the road, it's going to be as natural as putting your shoes on. You get in a boat, you put your life jacket on. It's very, very simple, it's very basic. We have, we have several programs and what we try to do is go in the schools, we always have booths set up. We will have, during the Blue Crab, we will be down there on Saturday at both docks for free vessel exams. You'll see people walking around like this or in blue ODUs. And this is an example and a time to be checked to see if your boat has everything that's required. You know, we're not gonna stop you from boating, but this tells you, well, okay, you don't have, your battery terminal covered, this life jacket is not good, you don't have enough life jackets. This just helps you to be safe on the water and lets everybody know that you've taken the time to make sure you're a safe boater. And the biggest thing that people need to remember is before, you know, being a safe boater starts at home. It doesn't start in the water. It starts the minute you walk out that door because you should have everything that you need so when you get to that boat ramp, your life jacket's there, your first aid kits are there, everything you need for your boat, you're set. So it starts at home. And that's the biggest thing that people don't realize. You know, we get in the boat, we grab it, we haven't even checked it from last time. And that's, that's a big push here, especially with Putnam County, all our lakes and rivers, streams, we've got everything galore and so much water. So our goal is, is we've spent the month of May, we are very, very happy to have the best masterly here, and it started with the vessel safety checks. On Sunday, when they had to check their boats in, we did a loop and had all of them come through, and these men are proud of their stickers. They want their sticker because they want everybody to know that they are safe boaters. Then as it continued, we had a safety kickoff, which we always did, it was last weekend, and it was great. We had people coming from out of our county because I stress in the newspaper, and I thank them very much for all their help, that we were stressing on kids. We had people, we had grandmothers that they didn't know how to put life jackets on their kids. So we have a little panda award that we give to the kids and we swear and say, you know, other right hand, and it just shows that they're, these are gonna remember this. These are kids, these are parents, doesn't matter what county you live in, doesn't matter what city you live in, we all need to be safe boaters. And even if you don't own a boat, it is your responsibility as a person, before you step on your neighbor's boat, to make sure that life jacket fits you, to make sure you're safe because you are number one and you are the only one looking out for you. So that is my speech. Most of y'all know me and I hope everybody is a safe boater this weekend and Blue Crab is coming up. And I thank y'all for your time and as always, your support because it really means a lot.
Thank you. Great.
Bye, guys. Thank you.
Okay. Now we're gonna recess for five minutes and we'll reconvene at that time. Okay, is everybody ready? I'm gonna reconvene the county commission meeting, May 24th, 2016. And before we go into public comment, I have asked Mr. Daniel Carl from Waste Pro to give us a report on the, the great Putnam County cleanup this weekend. I think we collected quite a few tons.
Yes, 9,290 pounds. Wow, so close to five tons. We had a rear loader staged in the west end. We had one in Interlochen, one in Pomona Park, one in East Palacka and one in Bosswick. And each one of them brought in about a ton. And so that puts about 3,000 pounds coming out of the city of Palacka, which they handled their own, but we handled everything from county line to county line. And we just had staging.
Your crew was great. Your trucks were at all the stations. I worked in Bosswick, the guy stayed even past the time he was prescribed, and we appreciate that.
Absolutely.
The county looks a lot better and we just wanted to give you a round of applause and thank Waste Pro. Thank you, Daniel. Okay, public comment. I've got one speaker card at this point. Faye Sparkman, if you would come forward. And I wanna remind everybody at public comment to get right in the microphone, we have issues with the system and we wanna make sure everybody is recorded clearly. Thank you.
Thank you.
We got them, Faye. Oh, yeah, there's plenty of them. Everybody got them.
Staff, take care of it.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This meeting that the volunteer fire station have in this time is to represent all of our veterans. And we were able to get Mr. Williams to come and speak. And then we worked very, very hard on trying to find Mr. Yoho. Took me quite a few months, but with some help, I got it. I found out in the process of talking to Mr. Williams that we have over 8,000 veterans in this county who get some kind of a check. That's not counting the ones like my husband who does not. I haven't met any veteran that doesn't vote and some of them have problems. So this is the best time to, all of you should be there. This is not in American Legion, you cannot do politics. This is strictly to honor our veterans. I talked to Mr. Yoho, they have over 120,000 in El Macho County, that's a lot of veterans. I've had a lot of people help me. One of them's gonna decorate, one of them's making special things, another person made another special thing to hand to the veterans. And so I think it's just something we all need to be involved in. The fire chief had asked me to do this, it took me a couple months to work on this. And thanks, Mr. Harvey. The other thing is, I'd like to say thank you for getting the sign fixed. It ended up our fire chief Gary was the one who came and fixed that also. It seems that the ballpark didn't say it was theirs, the county doesn't say it's theirs, although the sign is on county property, the sign belongs to the ballpark. So yesterday I went over there and it was weed eating and the nuts are all fine, they're all there, and just thank you for doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Faye.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Mr. Mike Merrill with us this morning. Come on up, Mike.
Hi, my name is Mike Merrill. I'm the, actually founder of a couple of different groups. I last addressed the county commissioners in October 2015 on behalf of a group called Friends of Putnam Animals. At that point in time, there was a long history of problems at animal control and we called for three changes with animal control. We called for new leadership, we called for new operating procedures, and we called for a new attitude for caring for the animals instead of killing them. And amazingly, we got it. I was actually quite surprised. I didn't expect to see improvements come so quickly. The, the chief at the time resigned and the county appointed Becky Vaughn as animal control supervisor. She immediately made sweeping changes to improve the operation of animal control. She banned hard-stick euthanasia, she banned pressure washing of kennels with animals in them, which common sense would dictate you wouldn't do, but it was going on. She started listing animals on Pet Finder, it'd never been done before. She started making arrangements to get animals spayed and neutered before getting adopted out, which helps the problem next year and the year after because there's less stray animals coming in. So a lot of immediate changes that she made had a huge improvement. And for the first time, I think, ever, Putnam County approached no-kill status. For probably the better part of six months, I don't think that there were any animals killed for lack of space. We came close a few times, but I, I was very, very thankful and very appreciative for the, everybody here for actually listening. That's kind of a new experience for me with government organizations, don't really expect to have your voice heard. And I was very appreciative and very thankful that positive changes have been made. I'm not saying life is perfect, there's obviously a lot of problems, there are budget issues, it's still a very small, very old facility with a inadequate budget, and I understand all that. I actually had proposed a meeting with the commissioners and Commissioner Harvey and Flag suggested a workshop. I proposed having leaders of rescue groups come in and talk to the, whoever the appropriate people would be. And I think the idea of a workshop is a great idea. I think there are a lot of things that would not only not cost any money, but would save a lot of money. A lot of things that could be donated from outside, including time from rescue groups. In an effort to be part of the solution, a month after I came here last time, I started a rescue called Florida Urgent Rescue. And in the ensuing six and a half months, we've saved 190 dogs and cats, including 130 from Putnam County. We wanna be part of the solution, we wanna help. Other rescue groups, when they saw the positive changes at the shelter, other rescues that stopped pulling from Putnam started coming back. And that was, that's also a huge improvement. No one person, no one group can do it on their own. I think, I think it's a community effort and a collective effort and I think it can actually cut your costs, save money, create goodwill in the community. So I'd love to see a workshop, I'd love, I will personally participate and I will get as many other rescue people as I can to participate because there's a lot of good ideas out there. The one thing I wanted to let you know about is that things have started slipping and going in the wrong direction. Since I proposed this meeting, we've had some recent bad news. I, I'm guessing it's coming from below the county commission level, but above the shelter level. And none of this is coming to me from Becky Vaughn, the shelter manager. She's too professional to say a word, but I, I'm there several times a week and I talk to people and I'm talking to other people in the county and I'm, there are three specific things that I think are, are kinda hurting and moving things the wrong way. One is, one of the changes is a feral freedom program that was started and then subsequently canceled. That's something I think we should put on the agenda for the workshop because I think there's some ways that, there's some positive, there's some room for improvement there. The second thing, which I think is an arbitrary decision, and I don't know where it came from, is that all animals will be killed after 30 days regardless of space available. To me, that's unconscionable. When the shelter is full, I get it, there's no space available, you have to euthanize animals. But when there are empty kennels available to kill healthy, happy animals simply because they've been there for 30 days, I think that's the wrong decision. That, that decision came down, I think, about six or eight weeks ago, it's, it's in place right now. And that's undermining morale, both among shelter workers and the outside rescue groups who are already throwing up their hands saying, they're right back to the same old thing, I give up. So I think that's a real easy thing to fix. The last thing is that there's a very dedicated employee, a former volunteer who came on as an employee who's been terminated simply because she is related to another county employee. And, and she was related to this employee when she was hired, and six months later, she's being fired for being related to the same person. And, and I think that's undermining morale as well. Her name is Charlie Spradling, she's a...
Mike, we're real familiar with that. It is a state statute. And we are following state statute. It was a temporary basis, there are documentation showing that was the agreement in the beginning and you're welcome to those papers anytime you'd like.
I'm not trying to get into personnel stuff.
It's a nepotism statute.
Okay.
Familiarize yourself with it and you'll see what we're up against.
Okay, all right. Well, I did wanna say thank you for listening, thanks for everything that you're doing, and I would love to, I will be happy to help in any way I can on behalf of outside rescue groups to try to help in any way that we can with, to continue to improve animal control.
Okay, thank you for your efforts. Okay, anybody else's public comment this morning? Seeing none, we're gonna go to the consent agenda. Commissioners, anything wishing to pull?
I have none. I have none, sir.
I have none.
None.
I so move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second? Not so fast. Pull item F, if you would, please, Commissioners.
An exception of item F.
There you go, 28 through 31, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Further discussion on the remaining consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's, we have anybody from IT? Yes, Bob, perfect. Come on up, Bob. I just have some basic questions.
Bob Stender, Putnam County IT. Good morning, sir. How are we doing today?
I'm trying to get to the section. Bob, on these switches, the only, the cost, there is a $2,000 amount, 2,747.73, and it is dealing with support services as well, but it seems to be a line item that appears twice. You have, hold on, give me just a second to look at it. I read it again yesterday.
While he's looking, can you explain to us what these switches do or provide?
These, these particular pieces of equipment connect in our data center, all our high-speed connectivity between our tape backup equipment, our high-speed SAN equipment, its infrastructure on the backend inside our, our data center. I'm gonna let you read it and here's the line I'm concerned with, it comes in at this figure and then again there and it seems to be almost the same thing. If you can just tell us the difference.
What page, Mr. Chairman?
What we're getting there is a one-year support.
What, excuse me, Bob, what page are you on there?
I'm looking at item four.
Item four on page thirty.
Page thirty.
Give us just a minute, Commissioners can see. All right, go ahead.
So item four there, you get, we're getting our one-year support that comes with the unit, and then we're purchasing an additional three years of support. So we'll be covered for four years. This kind of equipment, we replace every five, six, seven, eight years. We've had this stuff in there right now for, I think, five years, the current equipment that we're replacing. So we try to cover it best we can all the way through, the whole time we're gonna have the equipment. So that is maintenance, ongoing maintenance, we'll have this covered for four years under maintenance.
Are we replacing it because of upgrades in the system or it's worn out?
Upgrades in the system, we've maxed out the capacity.
Okay.
I need to add additional equipment, the only way to do it is replace. Yes, we are getting a benefit of additional speed, this is 10 gig capable equipment, replacing one gig capable equipment.
Okay.
So it'll improve our whole infrastructure on the backend of the data center, lets all our equipment get upgraded to a higher speed.
Okay, so the backup is dealing with some of the backup fiber options we just put in?
Backup and our big, our big data stores, our SAN equipment.
Commissioner Flag?
Yes, I'm with our chairman. How much warranty comes when purchased? And then you say you have the one-year extended and then three more years, so is it four years after a one-year normal warranty or is it no warranty and then you're having to buy it extended twice?
You know, that's what it looks like.
Well, that is why I pulled it also. It looked, there's, it's an overlap, it's a small overlap, but I think that we're spending money that we don't need to.
Well, I guess if, I guess the question that I would have is, how much warranty comes just upon purchase? And then if it's a one-year extended and then a three-year extended, that's four years, but when does the four-year period start?
That's it, that's the overlap I speak of.
Right.
That's it, that's the overlap, I speak of. I was just going to encourage you staff to go back and clarify that with the vendor.
Because we're getting two of one and then one of the other.
Yeah, you've got two one-year packages and then one three-year package.
Let me go clarify that.
Okay, be fine.
It could be just a little technicality in the description here.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, would you like him to bring it back next meeting?
I would.
Okay.
So just bring this back next meeting, then?
I just thought it needed a little bit of scrutiny. It could be just phrased wrong there, I'm not sure, but...
And that's the SCW quote, that's not actually the quote we're going to use. We're going to use the SHI quote, it was the cheaper one. That's on page 29.
Just, with the budget officer, Stacy Propel, and bring it back to us.
But since that's not the one we're using, Mr. Chairman...
He, I'm sorry. He's, this item has the quote we're using and several quotes for comparison, and I think the one that you're questioning is just one of the comparative quotes. That's right.
The SCW quote's not the one, we're using the SHI quote, page 29.
You just put that one in, but this the one we're voting on.
So you could almost pull that page and not look at it, other than the bottom line?
And you can see here, we've purchased a three-years additional, it comes with one year.
So although the discrepancy is in the SCW quote, that's not the one we're going to award anyway, so it's not relevant.
Okay, that's exactly, I needed clarity.
Sorry about that.
It's okay. I didn't want to spend taxpayers' money, we didn't need to.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for your due diligence, because that was a very good point.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, Bob.
I so move that we award the direct purchase of these fiber switches to SHI in the amount of 38,107.44.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Okay. Okay, item number seven, we have Troy Hayes from Jones Admin and Associates. Good morning. Thank you for being with us, sir. Page 32 through 36 in your packet.
Thank you all very much. I'm happy to say, in January, we actually completed construction of the wastewater system. Going through the financials, working very close with John Jones and his staff there to figure out the budgets, the many grants that we had, the grant loan combos. The total project was around $14 million. So as we've essentially paid off all the bills on it, figured out where we sat, there's money remaining in the RD grant loan, as well as in one of the SRF LP grants. And we've requested permission, Larry requested through USDA, to use that remaining RD money to hook up some more residents. So that's where we are here now. And the way that we had to do that, we couldn't go out for a new bid, we had to change order into the current contract. So we negotiated with Ortega to get a change order with them to hook up as many more people as we could, focusing really Dupree, the AC installation, they're right south of Water Main, they're, excuse me, wastewater main, they really want to be connected, as well as the Vet facility, about 1,000 feet on south of the end of the wastewater line. We really want to hook them two up, and then we're, of course, we'll hook up all the residents and businesses in between as well. So we negotiated the change order, that's one of the items, the four items that are on there with Ortega, for, it was, I believe, 164, 164,000. The RD grant money remaining is about 160,000 that we have. So we're going to use that money to fund that, plus some local funds that the Vet and AC Dupree have contributed to make up the rest of that money. And then the other two items that are on there, the SRF LP grant that we had some money remaining on, we're able to reallocate that to engineering fees, because this part of the project was not in the original scope, there was no design down there, as well as we have to have construction oversight. So we're going to use that SRF money to Jones Edmonds, that's the other change order that's on there, to our contract, to provide construction oversight, permitting with FDOT and FDP, which are both already in the works, as well as a little bit of design work to make sure we can get the capacity down there.
Troy, so the lack of design work, because it's an add-on, is the reason for the full-time resident?
We have to have, you have to have full-time engineering resident observation for any, that's a rural development requirement. When their money's out, it's to make sure that what you actually designed is being installed. So RD requires you to have the full-time resident observation.
Okay.
So I would recommend on most, well, I'm an engineer, so you can, if you take, that's what it's worth, but I would recommend you want that on any large construction project anyway.
It seemed like a very short stretch, and it looks simple to us, but I guess it's not.
It's...
Obviously, RD has experienced problems in the past, or they wouldn't have that as a requirement.
Certainly, sir.
Yeah, okay. I just was inquisitive about that. Commissioners? Commissioner Harvey?
Troy, you mentioned a public-private partnership with Dupree's and the Vet.
Yes, sir.
And they put in some money. Explain that a little bit more in detail for our audience, please.
What we had, we had the amount remaining from RD that we could use for construction, just short of 160,000. And the original cost that we requested from Ortega was around, I think it was 176,000. So we still had 16,000 remaining. We negotiated that down to, I think I said 164 previously, but I believe it was 167. So there was about a $7,000 difference right there, 7,500.
7,500 bucks.
Yeah, so we then went and said, you know, you guys really want this to happen, could you help us make up this difference? And both, well, we discussed that with the Vet, the Vet said certainly. He went and discussed that with Dupree as well, they said certainly, we want this to help us, and they've actually both already contributed the money, John Jones has the checks right there for you.
That's just a wonderful story that we need to tell.
Yeah. It worked out very good.
Well, there's three things that it's wonderful about. First of all, the veterinarian was looking at a very expensive septic system, which we're not encouraging, because he's only, as the cry flows, right by the river. So we didn't want that nutrients running into the river. And the rest of the residents, too, are also on septic tanks. And we added customers, much-needed customers to our line. So this was a win-win, and with Commissioner Harvey, I salute you for finding a way to make it work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we have the check, is that right?
That's the check, right.
This is a good story.
Hold on my tab again.
Okay, any other comments? Staff, Commissioners?
Oh, I guess the only question is, do we need to vote on each of these items separately, or do we do it all together?
It's really, it's up to the Commissioners. If nobody has any issues with any of them, you can lump them all together and vote on all of them?
Yes, yes, let's put them together.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item 7, A, B, C, and D for approval.
Second.
Second on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Troy, we thank you, sir.
Thank you, Troy.
Okay, we'll go to appointments. They're in front of you, I'll entertain any appointments that you might have. We'll start on my right. Commissioner Harvey?
I have none right now, sir.
Commissioner Palister?
I have none. I do know that Mr. Wilson is not, he lives out of county now and not able to commit the time, and he does want to not be reappointed anyhow. I'm looking for someone to replace him, and that is an at-large position.
Okay, Commissioner Flag? Commissioner Harris? Okay, we'll move on. We'll go to County Administrator, Miss Stacy Propel.
I have nothing.
This morning.
Thank you, I have nothing.
Okay, County Attorney, Stacy Manning.
Nothing for me.
Clerk of Court, Mr. Tim Smith.
We have no other items today.
Thank you for your earlier items. And Commissioner comments?
Yes, I would like to give you kind of an update. Last Saturday, during the cleanup, I actually ran out to Camp Shands, out at the Boy Scout camp, as you well know, out in West Putnam, and they just finished up their 6.5 million-dollar